Good evening, welcome. It is Monday, May 1st, and it is 7:30 here in the Gray Hall. Madam President, we begin by calling the board of members.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Pro.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Forrest.
Present.
Counselor D'Angelo.
Present.
Counselor Calmucci.
Present.
President Hughes.
Here.
Nine members to have a floor.
Thank you.
If you'll all stand, please, and join me in moment of silence for our men and women in uniform serving here in abroad. And please turn and face our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam President, if you would please, if you'd be able to...
For someone who feels the need more, any person may make an audio or video recording this public meeting or make a committee meeting through a media. Attendees are therefore advised to start recording for permission on May 1st, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and that may be acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you, Madam President. As many, if not everyone, here this evening knows, the city of Quincy lost a legend in John Gillis last week. And, of course, John was the Quincy City Clerk for many years prior to Joe Shea and also to our office clerk, Mr. Chrisco, and also Norfolk County Commissioner. And John's life was full of family, friends, but most assuredly public service. And it is tonight that we wish, as a council, to honor him by dedicating this meeting to him and asking all of those to think of him and his family this evening. To honor John in the appropriate way, we've asked our former city clerk, Joe Shea, and now Norfolk County Commissioner, Joe Shea, to come and speak to us tonight and just share a little bit about the person that John was. So, Mr. Commissioner, if you would please...
Thank you.
...come to the podium.
Thank you, Madam President. This is kind of a treat here, getting to stand at the new podium. I'm so used to the old one, I hope you haven't thrown it away. I think it's historic. I was a little caught off guard when you, you and Counselor Calmucci requested me to be here, but I'm really happy to be here. I know that you have a packed agenda. And we've just had a whirlwind three or four days with the passing of John Gillis. I've taken the liberty to pass out a little biographical sketch. Most of you already know it. I have also included a list of all the people that he actually served with, both as councilors and clerk as an employee of the council, and mayors that he's worked with. It doesn't include people sitting here, but after John retired, in 1992, he really did retire, so he really worked with everyone. But, a couple of interesting notes. There's been 12 city clerks. Mrs. Chrisco is the 12th city clerk. John served a little over 35 years clerk, and two as assistant. And certainly, in the last five clerks, served 103 years, and he served 37. So, his record will probably never be matched. And while we're sitting here at the council, I'm going to go on my own. It's saying, certainly since inception of the city, no one has attended as many city council meetings as John Gillis. I know a lot of people who blew a G grid and attended a lot of council meetings. John had a habit of always making every council meeting and every extra meeting, it just, you know, went with the territory. And he warned me when I came aboard that the hottest part of the job was being clerk of the city council. Just a little extra. But, I was fortunate enough to eulogize John in church today, and I talked about John being from the greatest generation, which he was. He was born in Quincy. He was educated in Quincy Public Schools. He was a parishioner at St. John's Church his whole life. He left Quincy High School where he was an outstanding athlete and went into World War II before he graduated as a U.S. Marine. He served in the South Pacific. He came home and he went one year to Air Academy to receive his preschool diploma. But he told me in the early days, he went to Air Academy to play football and to sharpen his skills. From there, he went one year to Boston College, and then switched from Boston College and went to Northeastern, where he completed his degree, he graduated from Northeastern. He was also captain of the football team. I made comment that his coach was not happy with Northeastern because in the senior year, he left the football team and joined the Quincy Fire Department before he graduated college. And as he said, "Well, I needed a job, so I went on the fire department." So, my point being, a member of the greatest generation, college educated in the 40s, which a lot of people weren't, yet when John became city clerk, from the day he became city clerk, it's like he invented the job. His practicalness, his common sense, his personality, and his love for the city made him what he was. So, all of those folks that you see there, he worked with, liked everyone, he had his favorites, but he had very few that he, they weren't in good stead with him. And I can't think of anyone that wasn't because he was a consummate professional. We all had John Gillis stories, and I'm not going to go into them here today, I did go into a few of them today, but there are hundreds and hundreds of John Gillis stories. They're all based on what's best for the city of Quincy, what's best for the people. And he had the biggest heart of anything on the earth. And he wanted the right thing done, and he wanted people to take care of him. And he wanted less fortunate people to get the best break they could. We joked about being local, all politics is local. He joked about Quincy Point. I'm sure he favored people from Quincy Point over other people, but he made everything, every country as well. I mean, it was no, no real, no real pecking out of John. He just treated the same, he treated people from the top to the bottom the same. And I'll tell you, the greatest thing personally that he taught me is, he taught me to treat people with respect and treat people the way you want to be treated yourself. And just, it just kept flowing and flowing. All of those years, when he retired, he went to Norfolk County as a commissioner. I'm fortunate enough, I succeeded him, I succeeded him as commissioner because he took care of me. They loved him there too. He treated everyone with such great respect there. In 1992, he told Bill Draper, when I was going in for four years, he didn't leave until 2015. He did that job nationally too. I was with him last week. He did slow down a little. He stopped driving a couple of years ago, as you all know. But he was still getting out, still getting to McKay's, getting to church when he could, but it was a struggle. And, four weeks ago, he went into rehab because of falling, he had fallen a thousand seven hundred. And every day on my day, he'd say, "You're my friend, get me out of here." Number one, I couldn't get him out. Number two, I had a feeling, I didn't know if he was ever going to come out. But, he did not suffer. He went quickly last week, and he's fortunate. And we're so very, very happy that he went in the manner which he did because his heart, everything was going good. And he, he didn't want to linger around. But he was the greatest man I've ever met, and just a great Quincy guy. And you all knew it, he missed everyone. He'd ask me every day, "What's the mayor doing? What's Counselor someone so doing? What's Nicole doing? What's Joe?" And I'd have to give him a report every day about everything. But, I'm so very, very fortunate. And I appreciate a moment to say hello. I don't want to take a lot of time. I know we've got a big schedule. And God knows, as the former department head, and I see so many of my former colleagues here, it is budget time, and it's a very important time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Shea. Thank you very much. And then next time, I'd just like to open it up briefly to some of my council colleagues who would like to say just a few words. Counselor Calmucci.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Find words. It's tough to, it's tough to even put in words how important, you know, John Gillis was to the city and with the institution. He was in and of himself. But he was also particularly important to this body specifically, which Joe had said. Probably no one's attended more council meetings. I can only imagine how many hours he spent here listening to councilors drone on and suffer through some of the meetings that happened in our history. But personally, you know, I think it's fitting that we pay tribute to him tonight. Personally, for me, I feel tremendously lucky to have known John. Lucky are still to have been able to have the benefit of his friendship and his advice. Back when the alumni was open, we'd go there on a Wednesday night and buy him a beer and unlock all of his advice. As long as he kept buying beers, he kept giving me advice. Once in a while, he'd tell me something positive he thought I'd done or said. More often than not, he would bring up things I'd done or said. I'd sit there and listen, and tell me all of the old stories, things that happened back in the day. He was sharp as a tack to the day he died. We'd all be lucky to have, have the brain power that he had in 90. Be lucky to have it today. But I'd love to just sit with him and listen. And for those who've served with me now, you know how hard it is for me to keep my mouth shut and just listen. But the stories that he had of the old days were something else. Stories about, you know, at their core, all about helping people, about getting positive things done, about making a call here, making a call there, connecting people together. But always at the end of it, it was about helping people and putting a good guy in a job and having everybody come out better off in the end. You know, some of his stories so politically incorrect. Very entertaining, but so very politically incorrect. I would never repeat them for fear of someone overhearing them. But those were the, you know, the good old days when things got done in a certain way. Again, always to help people. But, he was just, he was just such a phenomenal guy. It's, again, it's hard to pay tribute to someone who's touched so many people in a positive way, who's had such an impact on the city, and the county for that matter. Someone whose life in and of itself was a tribute to the service of others. He was a class act all around as a husband, a father, a grandfather, a veteran, a friend, and a public servant his whole life. He loved this city and this body, the city council. And it's fitting tonight that I think we show our love back to John Gillis and certainly to his.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Calmucci. Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, Mr. Gillis was very influential in my political career before I got involved in politics. I knew him through my wife that worked with his daughter over at Hager Van Guard across the street here. When I started to get involved in politics in my school committee running a few years ago, and he was over 1,007 hundred. He says, "You are a Quincy Point kid, and I've watched you over the years." And the wisdom that Counselor Calmucci tried to talk about, that wisdom of knowledge that he would give me about hot work and about hot city back on your laurels. And, you know, I look at this list of what his, what his impact was on the city, what his impact was on other people. And the last two years, being over McKay's, I would run, almost every other time, I would run into Joe Shea, Mr. Gillis, and Kevin. The three of them, three musty tears, they were there all the time. And I'm going to miss running into you guys and then seeing you guys with John in there having breakfast. You know, words can't describe. They don't make him like him anymore. I mean, it's a different generation. We were talking about that at the week last night, at the Commonwealth today, when we had lunch. But my condolences go out to the family. I know them very well. And to see everybody together and to remember the good times, remember the good things that he did and the legacy that he put on the city. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Vaughn. Yes, Counselor Finn.
Again, it's very difficult for me because actually I was not able to attend any of these events in memory of John, unfortunately. But at one point, I think everybody should really realize, whether you're a politician or not, you know, that really wasn't what made John, fortunately, John. My first encounter ever in City Hall, just before he was leaving in 92, I had my little son at that time. He was nowhere, he wasn't even close to a year old. I was just absolutely amazed because he didn't know me from Adam. But my wife and I were there, next thing I know, he was bouncing his baby all around City Hall. I carried him, asking us all kinds of questions and happy and smiling. And I think, I've never forgotten that, that particular experience. And I think that's what made him so unique and special. Wasn't the politics of it, although he was, again, as many vindicated, willing to give advice. It was just, he was just such a nice person to everybody. It didn't matter who you were. And so, and he's lived a great, long life. You know, our most recent discussions were all around St. Bottom Ventures University, which she made a connection. I think it's one of his great grandchildren is actually attending St. Bottom Ventures. But, again, just a very, very person who represents, not just the best of that greatest generation, but the best of our community and city. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Finn.
Thank you very much, Madam President. You know, after some of the comments that were shared here this evening, you know, how do you, how do you articulate the, you know, the impact of an icon? It's, you know, the amount of folks that he touched is just, it's incredible. Obviously representing the Quincy Point area. When I think of John Gillis, I think of a guy who just, you know, unconditionally helped everyone. You know, when you get out there and you engage in our doors and you talk to people throughout the community, they talk about, you know, John Gillis and how he was instrumental in whatever the issue was that was going on with their family. You know, John was just a highly regarded, you know, public servant. And that was it. And his love for the city and his unconditional willingness to just, just go out of his way is like the example, you know. And I just think about like what the job is, you know, being of service to other people. Being the guy was just completely above and beyond. And I know Commissioner Shea had mentioned it, just his institutional memory was remarkable. And even like the short term, every time I'd see him, "How's your wife? How's your baby? How's this? How's that?" And it was just like, wow. You know, and he would do that to hundreds of other people. But he always made you feel like, you know, you were the only person in the room. And I always miss, you know, when you talk about him and ask him a question. "Oh, sure, oh, sure." You know, just an absolute love of a human being. And, you know, like, my condolences to the Gillis family. Quincy lost a, Quincy lost a Titan, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. John Gillis has been a longstanding family friend of mine goes back many years with my mother. She was also part of the frequent, frequent attorney McKay's. I'm pretty sure, let's see, it took him in some business over there. But he was just a regular, it was great to see him so active in the state, so active in the community. And for those who would make sure to bring him up, that was so important to him. I, some of my best memories too, Counselor Calmucci, were at the alumni event and his stories. And I think, good thing it wasn't QATV and social media back in the Gillis era. We are very blessed to have him. Mastay talked about, you know, the more they give, the more that he'd give, the more that anyone would see. We're so blessed here in the city of Quincy. John Gillis gave so much to our city. We're very blessed for his friendship and my thoughts and his relationship to the community.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Again, thank you, Commissioner Shea, for coming in this evening and just sharing. And again, we're dedicating this meeting to the memory of John Gillis and thanking him and his family for all the gifts that he gave, not only our city, but our state and certainly our communities. At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Pro to come up and be as a confirmation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It is, you know, with great enthusiasm that we take a moment here and, you know, reflect on the work of the humble entrepreneur in Dan Quark. He has recently celebrated his 40th anniversary at a Chevy dealership. Like, over 40 years owning and operating automotive dealership in the city of Quincy. But when you really put that in perspective and think about the different economic cycles that he continued to move this business forward and grow it and be of service to the community is actually quite remarkable. Mr. Quark was obviously one of the first folks that I met when I was newly elected. As many know, he, you know, he has a larger, a rather large stake in the Florida shipyard. And, you know, things that you may not know about Mr. Quark is all the work that he does, you know, to help other people. He does so quietly. Many folks are aware that he offers up, you know, space down at the, down at the R2 Quincy Fire Department. Has been instrumental in his, you know, Drive for a Cause program that promotes, you know, the schools throughout the city. Most recently, you know, through a conversation that him and I had, was the first private donor to the, you know, city's, what will be the first all-inclusive playground, you know. The story just kind of goes on and on. He's a major stakeholder in the city's 4th of July celebration, Flag Day celebration, is responsible for the finale of the, you know, the fireworks. But at the core, he's just, he's a really good guy. He's a responsible business owner. And I think, most importantly, you know, he also is a, is a, is an individual that gives back to the community that he serves. So, if you would please, you know, join me in congratulating Mr. Quark on his recent milestone with the business and applauding and applauding my friend.
Thank you very much. As the Court Organization celebrates 40 years in Quincy, I've always believed in being a good corporate citizen. Quincy with the elected officials, the people that live in Quincy, people that do business with us, and the people that live in Quincy that work at the Court Organization. It's very easy to be a good corporate citizen. So, on behalf of the court companies, I really appreciate your acknowledgement and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President, if you'd be able to come over to me with your direction, Madam President. If we could keep a pause for our court photo. It reads, "In recognition of the 40 years of business in the city of Quincy, we honor your extraordinary commitment to your staff, customers, and community. Your countless acts of generosity and dedication to so many worthy civic causes through Quincy and the South Shore, including sharing spaces with Quincy Fire Department and Florida Shipyard, to supporting kids of the community with your annual Drive for a Cause program. Your financial contribution to the city of Quincy's first all-inclusive playground designated for a field, as well as your sponsorship of the annual Flag Day fireworks finale truly shows you care for the community. You're a true friend of the city of Quincy, and we are grateful for your dedication." And with that, take a brief recess.
Of course. Brief recess.
Could you still hear the clicking up there?
All right, we are back in session. And Madam President, if you would, please read the first amendment.
We are going to take out one, two, and three appropriations for the fiscal 2018 federal funding project, appropriations for the fiscal 2018 sewer enterprise project, and this fiscal 2018 water enterprise. And Mayor Coe is here to present.
Welcome, Mayor Coe. Very nice to see you here this evening for this annual budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is the city council. It's great to be with you tonight. I made my presentation. I too want to add my words of gratitude for the gift of life of John Gillis. Amazing guy, lived his full life,是个伟大的人 是个伟大的人, a fellow giver, one of my mentors in government. I graduated in City Hall in 1990. And before that, I worked out of the Kennedy Center, Baywood Hill Center building. And when you went out to see John Gillis at Tommy Barre, the first flow was a haze of smoke. I mean, smoked cigarettes, and John smoked cigars. Even though the sign said, "No smoking," for a whole six... And I would frequently get visitors when I became executive secretary of the Jim Sheets. At least three times a week, people came up with John's card and saying that, "Mr. Gillis sent me up to see you. Get him a job." So, I asked John, "Gee, John, can I minimize that?" "Well, no, 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 I'm not going to be the one to say no." He hated to say no because he loved people. He loved to give. He's a legend that laid, left an incredible legacy that will build character for a long time. We thank John for his service. We'll miss him. Along those lines, I should just point out a couple of things that happened this past week. John was a U.S. veteran, a Marine Corps veteran. And this past weekend, Sunday, we were at the Caddy Memorial as a city honor in William Caddy, who was a Nellie Long who was taken cautiously, Montclair kid, went to North, was killed in the Vietnam, jumped on a grenade to save the lives of his comrades. So, you know, to Mark Marley and the folks at the Caddy detachment, we thank them for their work, keeping his memory alive and reminding our younger generations that there is a cross to free. And some of you were at the event last week at the Fox Tower at 3:00, 2:00, I guess it was, the formal program. But prior to that, we had some events related to that. And I want to thank Larry Norton and Tom Belinda for leading the effort and remembering the 48 men from Quincy who were killed serving their country in Vietnam. My favorite part of the day really was 11 o'clock in the morning at North Quincy High School, where Captain Richard Stratten came home in Florida to see for the first time the Asia Romana and to see Robert Reddno, the mayor of Allen Reddno, help to speak to the students. And you could hear a pindraw in that auditorium. Captain Richard Stratten was in...
Captain Richard Stratton was in the POW Vietnam War for about six years. He's a flyer, a deputy captain, amazing person. He spoke to the kids that day about the values he learned as we're heading through it, the values of the city. Bob Rednough spoke of his brother, who was one of the longest-serving POWs in nation's history. Alan Rednough was an undergrad on MIT, wanted to be an astronaut, became part of the effort to work and unfortunately lost his life in return, home sheltered afterwards. So incredible day, another post at Fox Tower, governor joined us, but having the chairman of the adjutant chiefs to staff with us, Quincy guy Joe Dunford, was pretty special. I know his mom and dad, Ken and Joe, very proud of him, are still in Marymount. And just an amazing guy who spent a lot of time with everybody out there, very gracious. We're certainly proud of him. I can't imagine without his head every day, keeping us safe and doing his part toward peace. In that day, we saw our great Joe McConville for Marymount, who informed us that his son James has been nominated for his fourth star, United States Army General, so his fourth star wants to be sent here. He was so proud as a father. Pretty amazing, two guys that grew up just a few blocks away from each other, are leading the efforts that our military and the station. So it was quite a weekend, true. It was a great city we have. And I'm reminded of that every day when we go to events like that. And having up his memorial day, this year we've got Tom Paly as our speaker. Tom Paly was an undergrad, ran the Howard University, lived in the army, was left for debt, shot pretty bad, and still is a disbillings to this day. He very accomplished in his field, outstanding Quincy resident who's helped a lot of folks over the years. So we look forward to Tom sharing his story for the day. And this Saturday, we've got Clean and Greener, our 28th year, so we encourage folks out there to join us as we continue to maintain our city and make it beautiful. As you get, I get a lot of emails every day, a lot of phone calls every day. I got one today from a visitor to our city. The woman's from Salem, she was visiting the National Park Service Places, and she took the time to send an email on how beautiful and clean Quincy was, which is quite impressive. We frequently hear about the more sexy things in government, things that go on, but the basics of keeping the city clean and safe are very, very important and was noticed by visitors. So I think that's something to note. So I want to thank you, councilors. I know that as administration, you put a lot on the plate, there's a lot of initiatives before you, very worthy initiatives, and I'm grateful for your dialogue or input and look forward to bringing some of these things to fruition. There's some school committee members behind me tonight that joined us. I think we've got Gaby Dubly, Aubrey Sol, and Emily Webo. Am I got it right? I want to thank the school committee members for the work they do each and every day for the benefit of our school system. As you know, it's an effort, we all come together to work hard for the residents of the city. I want to thank our legislative delegation to work out of local aid and Chapter 90 and other issues that affect the city. Governor Begum, Lieutenant Governor Creo, and the three partners, whether it's Masswork Grants, Gateway City Grants, Seaport Economic Grants, whatever it may be, they've been tremendous in sharing the wealth of this community. Deb Goldberg, I say treasure, the school building authority, has been just amazing for our school system and our facilities. Once we get the new middle school over in southwest Quincy, built a reimbursement in total for schools last several years, we did about a hundred and twenty million dollars of state money coming back to Quincy for those efforts. We thank her and our state delegation. Congressman Lynch is always there as a partner on those federal issues and federal funding. We appreciate what he does for the city. Behind me are our department heads and department managers who give it their all each and every day. You can see these folks in their offices nights and weekends and out with all kinds of events and valuable for their leadership, certainly as CEO, one can't do it alone. Each of these people have a great mission, what they do, and they're doing well, grateful for their work. And then, of course, all our city employees, all across the city, that get it done each and every day, always, always very able to smile. I do get a lot of mail with folks that complimenting, interacting with city employees. They work very hard, we appreciate all of their efforts. As far as the budget tonight, before I get into it, I do want to express my gratitude to municipal finance department, Mark Gavinon, Eric Mason, my staff, Chris Walker especially, DIT staff, but certainly Chris and Eric in particular for the work they did in getting the narrative and all the numbers. Hopefully, we do have some big time. You know, I think that this budget does reflect our values as a community. I know that people weigh in different aspects or enjoy certain aspects of what we provide as services, and we end up where I'm about. Some people, it may be schools, some of them may be libraries, some of them may be parks. And we, as a government, have to try to put it all together and provide the best possible solution to accommodate the needs and expectations of our residents in all those areas. But I'm so proud, as you all should be, of our city in so many ways. You know, we're a safe city, our public safety unit's done an amazing job, outstanding education system we have, students, my favorite night of the year, we let you know, school is just graduation for each of our high schools. And we can see it all come together, all the effort that goes on in the life of those kids going through our system. We have a park system second to none. I mean, our libraries are incredible. I talked about clean streets, those emergency services, not just police and fire, but in the middle of the night when I throw a backup or water break, those guys are out there dealing with senior services, attending center. I hear lots of positive things from seniors, particularly folks, older folks that may have lost a spouse. And they go to that center and get a great sense of a warm welcome and are able to plug into some things to continue to enjoy life. So I'm grateful to all who get involved each and every day to provide the best we can for the people we serve. Before I get into the budget, I just want to note that last year, this body voted on the capital approval program, including the streets. We started this past fall, let's carry over to the springs, between last fall, the spring and the summer, we expect to be doing about three of the streets. That's a result of the positive discussion we had in this body and year to year work, so I'm grateful for that. And we have more work to do with streets. And as I've said, for maybe a year and a half, two years now, as we get through our long-term deficit, we have one more year of that payment on the winter from health that we experienced, we then can refocus a little bit more effort each and every year on that part of it. I think we've made great progress, Commissioner Ryan Hiskim on sidewalks all across the city. And I think that we've made great progress on our school buildings. We have a number of initiatives before you related to public buildings and other properties that we own and maintain. And I believe the next couple of years, we'll spend more time in the effort on the streets and sidewalks. So with that, let me go through the presentation. So this year's budget, as you can see on the slide, is just under 300 million. Percent increase is about 4% from last year. It accounts, if you look at the public safety education, employee benefits, that's almost a daily percent of the budget. It's about $2.9 million increase for schools and $2.4 for the fire department and a million dollars for the police department. If we go by category, you can see the pie there and how it's broken out. The increases, I think, are fairly conservative. This is a budget I think that meets the needs of our city, the expectations, the services that we provide. There's a significant increase in the fire budget this year because of the adjustments we've made. I believe this council has been calling for some of those adjustments for a few years, if not, some of you new members, I know that some of the members that sat here before talked about some of those issues. But we were looking at, as you can see, we're looking at about $11.5 million total increase. Pretty much, if you look at the number of years we've been at this, it's pretty conservative and pretty much in line with what we've been doing. And if you do some comparisons, we're in pretty good shape. But as far as our priorities in 2018, I mentioned the fire department. It's additional personnel and additional overtime in this budget. I think for the first time in many, many, many fiscal years, this budget is fully funded. We won't have to come back to this body and look for transfers for overtime. We've enjoyed a good relationship between our fire leadership and our union. And one of the big changes here is the full-time Rescue One in-service on a full-time basis. That's been some radical over the years because of manpower and funding. Rescue One is an important piece of apparatus in the fire service, as you all know, and will serve this community quite well. Additionally, the overtime that we've talked about over the years, it wasn't quite there, we believe will be in good shape in the budget. And with the additional manpower, it should reduce the amount of overtime needed to cover the shift, so it should balance out. Some of you may know, we also went to a 24-hour shift in our contract. And with the 24-hour shift, as was predicted, there is less overtime used, at least for the first couple of years. So that's been something we've been looking to address and that has been addressed. The next one is the education budget. As I mentioned, a $2.9 million increase continues the trend that we've seen. This provides all those programs and services that are there today. This past year, this council voted for appropriation to add to the school budget because they lost a particular grant from the state. So that is included in this budget. We're looking at some reductions in savings in the electricity side of things, but this budget will be adequate to meet those needs and provide a little bit of question flexibility for the superintendent of the school committee, because things change all the time. You plan, and you plan, but comes September, some things change, new kids come in, you have to make adjustments, staff, and make those appropriate decisions. So I think this is an excellent budget for school budget. And I, again, am so incredibly proud of our school system. And I very seldom, and I mentioned it before at this podium, I very seldom talk about, my case is, it's not about my kids, but in addition to being a chairman of the school committee, being a father of two that are about to graduate this year, I believe, I'm just so amazed and just impressed on a regular basis on the teachers, on the staff, principals, coaches, batting coaches, the job they do for our youngsters is just incredible. So we're grateful for that and looking forward to another great year for our schools. The next, this talks about some of the other new ideas of the budget. Historically, the police department had five captains, it actually went up to six at one point. It's been at four for a few years now, and I feel at the request of the chief and justified the case to me, and I believe he'll do the same deal when he needs me for you, the need for that position, and we include that in the budget. We've added another junior traffic engineer, then traffic department lighting alarm department. And I know that this was discussed by some councils looking for this. We need certainly some more help in that department as we continue to meet the challenges of our new growth and our old traffic systems across the city. And it's a good chance to put another plug in for one of those CIP items, which is that citywide traffic study and recommendations that I think will prove very, very helpful going forward. Additionally, we're adding a commercial assessor to the assessors office. That's been a kind of a weak area over the years. And this gentleman that we're looking at has been doing some part-time work for us in Portland, talk in the state, and I believe it will result in great dividends really to the city in so many ways. We've got an additional labor added to the park department, additional space in parks that we've created over the years, made the case for that. There's a new technician and other investments in our IT department. We're trying to use the unit system, the software package to its max, and with that comes more training if necessary, and we look forward to that. Public buildings, it's an additional $125,000 at department. We have a lot of public buildings, as you know, and this is about to keep them in repair. And this past year, we added an appropriation of $60,000 toward the road control of the health department, which was at 28 years' start. So we're fully funding the $80,000 for that issue going forward by health department. Our budgets that I mentioned over the last five years have been in that 3% to 4.5%. This falls at 4%, up to 4% spec over. And I guess if you look over the last 10 years, it would be very similar ranges. There's nothing out of the ordinary in that regard. And it also compares pretty well to other communities, those that have been out publicly with their budget proposals. Here's some of them here, some of these we compare to on a regular basis, but I think we're in that conservative category, if you will, of proposed budgets for various communities around the state. Fiscal 18 continues to be one of the build reserves. We've made that candidates, and I know that this body has discussed the policies and procedures that we recommended. We've worked with our outside auditor, our outside financial advisor, the bond council, on trying to get to that right, a balance, if you will. You can see the increase in the stabilization, which is extremely important. When I say balance, you know, there's a balance to everything. They use that a lot in government, but you know, from the perspective of the outside bond advisors, it's building reserve, yes, it's also maintaining the capital assets, and that's the balance. We've got to invest into our schools and our firehouses and our buildings and parks and roads, because if you're not doing that, you take a hit from the bond folks that we often not maintain our capital assets as we should. So it's a combination of maintaining the assets as well as building the stabilization. And we've added, again, in this budget, a line in the stabilization fund and the OPEP reserve account, which is now growing to about a million four, I believe. But the stabilization grows based on our free cash as well. As you know, each year, once we establish the free cash, we come back and put some of that money away in the stabilization, some of it to snow and ice and some of it to OPEP. So that will continue going forward as well. So we are going in the right direction with our stabilization, as you can see in the trends. Our total debt this year in the line is up about $2.45 million, and some of that is due to the DIF borrowing coming to. We, as you know, we carry all of it in the budget, but then we have offsets. So the 6% of the total budget is well within the range that we talked about publicly. I believe that this body has accepted. It's, you know, as I mentioned, the DIF includes a $1.28 million, which is now coming to. We've gotten through the ban process, the shutdown of borrowing, you know, some of this gets established along term loan. There are offsets that happen, and you're aware of those, and that's some from the hotel tax, which pays the commitment on the old park bond. Our CPA, complete preservation fund is paying, as you know, a portion of debt in this building and the product building, and that's extremely important. And as we talked about, district improvement finance, which is what DIF is, we've been saying, at least I've been saying, you might say here, that the downtown has to pay for itself, that we're not going to put that burden on the average taxpayer. And the reality of all of that is that the downtown has been on a burden for the average taxpayer, the garage that we had taken down, the garage built by the taxpayers in Quincy, we've got state funding to remove that garage because it's in bad shape. So the new growth, both for new buildings but also new values of the downtown contributes to that dollar round needed to pay that debt down. And that's a commitment that certainly I've stuck by and continue, will continue to stick by going forward. When you calculate the offsets, that's really about 5.3%. We continue to enjoy a very strong bond rating, double A+, I'd like to get to triple A at some point, but there's only a handful of communities that are higher rated than we have across the Commonwealth. And as the recent standard report indicated, we've got strong vegetarian performance, strong vegetarian flexibility, and that lower overall debt. This next slide shows, this includes all of the items that this body has voted on. I believe that's going forward. You can see we have the capacity. I said many years ago before this body that, you know, the goal is that it's kind of a flat line, not to have any spikes. There's no question that we need to continue to invest back into the community, whether it's flood control, whether it's public buildings, whether it's seawalls, or our parks. And we'll continue to do that and stay within that ratio that we talked about. So we do have plenty of room for capacity going forward. Next slide speaks about our revenue. For those of us at home, the property tax is that. For those folks at home, the property tax is that, it's all taxes collected, the levy, the property tax. The local receipts is a number that is generated by all of the funds we collect through excise tax, through building permit fees, through birth certificates, and all those other minor fees that may pay into the province. And then the state aid number, sixteen percent, which has been kind of almost level funded with the tax increases. But the state continues to have some challenges with their revenue as well, so that makes up the total revenue package. So the total levy average percent last five years has been three percent, I think that's a pretty good number. Our residential bills, and I know you here, I hear from folks that, let's face it, nobody likes to pay taxes, anybody wants all the services, we're going to try to meet the middle there. But when you look at us and compare us to other communities right around us, you know, our increases are a little less than our neighbors in Granton, Waymouth, and certainly less than the state average. You know, again, we're looking at a conservative budget, but our new growth numbers are looking pretty good, and that helps us. And what's been a challenge over the last probably four to six years has been the continually uptick in the value of the residential properties. And the commercial properties have been stagnant, we're seeing now great movement in commercial property. There's a lot of examples of that, I'll give you a couple. One is down in North Quincy, there's, well, there's two buildings that were purchased by the Campanelli Companies that were vacant. And those companies, I'm sorry, those buildings now filled with companies, and one of those buildings has been sold for a pretty hefty sum recently. And so we're seeing a great uptick in the commercial growth. What does that mean? That means now when we go to set the tax rate this fall, instead of that crazy residential number carrying the levy, we have the commercial going up. Maybe not at the same rate, but the most that carries the burden, so the residential is carrying a tight burden. So, you know, in the early years, I made estimates here of what the tax rate may look like in the fall. The values have been a little crazy the last couple of years, and I was a little hesitant to do that because this, as you know, there's so many pieces to it, it's a complex formula. But I'm going to go out on a limb and suggest that this budget will result in a tax increase for the average single family, somewhere between a hundred dollars and a hundred and fifty dollars. Which is a good place to be for what we've seen over the last seven years. Keep in mind, and I say this again to the public, this is our main source of revenue to run local government. And local government is where the rubber hits the road, literally. You know, Uncle Sam takes that income tax right out of you automatically for you, the state does the same. Property tax, you have to write a check, people think about it, and they certainly are cognizant of that. But I also suggest, there's no community in this state that provides the services that we do here, whether it's seniors, whether it's kids, whether it's libraries, parks, who name it, veterans, you know, we do it well. And this budget reflects those values and will certainly fund those values. The next slide, you know, this is another term our, very few people understand out there in the public, but excess levy capacity, it essentially means we couldn't be taxing more today. We don't have the levy limit, we've left, I think since I've been mayor, about $150 million on the table with the levy limit. And if you look at the chat here, I think there's only three communities, three cities, we won't call it the Massachusetts, that have a higher level of capacity, levy capacity than we do. And that's a good thing to have, by the way, if there was a, an emergency, a catastrophe, or something needed to deal with, we'd be able to do that without doing two and a half override. You know, you see Marshfield, they just rented the bed from Marshfield, and override just to fix a roof for the school, that's how tight they are with the levy capacity. And that's true with most communities. We weren't out here at school without talking about two and a half. We've had schools built in the South Shore, the towns and cities had to pass an override just to build on school. So the work we're doing here is good work with good results for the residents of this city. So with that, I want to close, I'll take any questions, of course, and certainly, our department heads will be available. Obviously, not only in my industry, but at any time in between, I'm available anytime for a phone call or meeting. I'm proud of who we've become as a city, I thank this body for the work that you do, we act as presidents. And I look forward to a successful budget season, thank you for your attention, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, thank you. At this time, I recognize Councilor Corle, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you Madam President, just making a motion to our President's Finance Committee, and then we'll work out the scheduling, which I know many folks are already aware of for the upcoming year, so thank you.
Alright, so motion for appropriation order 2017-61 to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counselor, I believe you have to read each appropriation.
So council order 2017-062, also make a motion to move that to the finance as well.
Motion for current finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, our council order 2017-063, also make a motion to move that to the finance as well.
Motion to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you Mayor, I'll take a brief moment.